This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, I'm going to start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:34 PM and I call the meeting to order. The first order of business today is to elect the chairman for the calendar year 2021. Would someone please make a motion to nominate the chairman?
I'd like to make a motion. This is Christina Kazanis. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Harold Watson for chair.
Thank you. Anyone seconding it? William Boyd, attended. Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded by Mr. Boyd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any other nominations?
Oh.
Oh, you're right.
Are there any other nominations for the chairman position? I'm sorry. Mr. Staley? Would you like to nominate yourself?
Excuse me? No, no, I just want protocol.
Okay. Okay. All right. So hearing that there are no other nominations. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. Motion passed with one, two, three, four people voting in favor of Chairman Harold Watson for the calendar year 2021. May I now request the Chair, Mr. Watson, to preside over the meeting and conduct the next order of business, that is to elect the Vice Chair for the calendar year 2021.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for voting for me. I'll do it again this year. I would like to take nominations now for Vice Chair. Anybody?
John Staley?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to nominate somebody. Christina as Vice.
Okay, John. John is nominating Christina. Anybody second that? William Boyd seconds that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. William?
Yes, aye.
Okay, that's four. Anybody opposed? And I don't hear anybody opposed. So assuming that, Christina, welcome to another year of Vice Chair.
Thank you, everyone. Happy to see you.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations to Mr. Watson and Kazanis.
The test is will we ever see each other in person again?
I know.
We will.
I hope so. So we're now going to our meeting, back to our regular meeting. Good evening. It's Harold Watson, Chair of Planning Commission. Due to the coronavirus 19 pandemic, we're conducting this special meeting on GoToMeetings.com on Monday, October January 19.
19, 19.
And it's now 6:38 PM. The quorum for this meeting is three, and I note here that we have one, two, three, four, five people in attendance. We have, including one of our alternates, Debbie Lamberty. Dan Sepp, our Commissioner from District Four, has not appeared yet. We also have in attendance Sussmita Atata, our Town Planner, Aileen Marsh, who is our Recording Secretary. We also have in attendance Bruce Jackson, representing the town on two separate matters, and Bob Rosetti, representing his client on another matter. Please identify yourself by name and title each time you would like to speak. This is per Governor Lamont's executive order, which allows us to conduct virtual meetings. The public is free to listen, but may speak only on the invitation of the Chair during both the administrative and the petition hearings. Sussmita, may I interrupt myself one second? We are doing a, what are we doing? Are we doing any any petition meetings tonight?
Sorry, what did you say?
Are we doing a petition tonight?
No, the 7:45 spot road has been continued until next month.
All right, then forget that.
February 16.
Administrative meeting. With that, I call the order this monthly session at 6:38. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, I mean, hearing no, and all opposed? Hearing none, well, I call this meeting to order. The first item on our published agenda is approval of minutes. Would someone please give me a motion for both the regular November 15, 2020 meeting, and also our special December 15 meeting?
I think they have to be separate.
All right, I will. I was trying to save time, but I will do them separately. I will amend that to be just our regular November 15 meeting.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
All in favor?
The November 15.
Thank you. Second? Debbie seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody object? Hearing none, it's accepted. I now need to have a motion on our special December 15, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion.
John Staley, motion approved.
I'm sorry, what?
All in favor? John Staley, I will take, I will take his again. Sorry. Made a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody disapprove? Hearing none, it's accepted. We now have our public comment on administrative items, but I think do we have anybody from the public here? I don't see anybody on our list. I do have a Joe and a Tom.
And Jerry.
Mr. Watson, you will want to ask them to introduce themselves.
Could, well, you, Sussmita, you have to free up their audio.
Yeah, they're both muted.
Let me just.
I'm live. If you would like me to introduce myself.
Mr. Joe would like to introduce himself, Mr. Watson, and I cannot unmute Mr. Tom. He has to do it himself.
Okay. So Joe, can you tell us what you're here for this evening? After you introduce yourself?
I'm just here to monitor the meeting, take a look at it and listen in. That's it.
All right, welcome. Could I now hear from Aileen, do you need their address also?
Not if they're not speaking. But I would, it would be nice if I could have their last name.
Joe, could I hear, before you get off, could you give her your last name?
I think Joe is muted.
It's painful.
Are you back, Joe?
He's muted.
Yeah, let's just.
Okay, then let me now move to Tom, but Tom, Sussmita said that you have to turn on your audio on your end. Tom, we're not hearing you.
Can someone send him a, oh, he can't send him a text.
Yeah, I think at this point we can continue with our meeting, Mr. Watson. If anybody from the audience would like to speak, you should ask them to let their name, full name and address be known for the record.
Can they, can they come on text? I think, can they, can they enter text for us?
If they would like to, as long as it's on the record.
I just sent a text.
You have to verbalize it for people who are on phone.
Yeah. I'm going to verbalize it, Mr. Staley.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're then going to move forward. I'm going to wait for Mr. Jackson and for, there's one other person here tonight. I'm going to introduce you.
Mr. Rosati.
Mr. Rosati, I'm going to wait, hold you two until we get to the section and let you introduce yourself when you start what you're presenting to us tonight. So we have no zoning referrals. We have no CAM side plan reviews. We have two, 824. The first one is the Van Buskirk Avenue parcels, plural, I believe. And that is concerning Bruce Jackson, I believe. You're the one that's presenting that for the town tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm going to let you go ahead and present, and then we will comment.
Fine. This is Bruce Jackson. I'm one of the Assistant Town Attorneys for the town of Stratford. The town of Stratford, as you may know, has a parcel at 91 Wood Avenue. And as part of that discussion, we began looking at the potential sale of 91 Wood Avenue. So when I looked at 91 Wood Avenue with a Realtor, with the idea of trying to get a value to sell it, it occurred to anybody looking at it, that there was a, a paper road behind it, which had a series of encroachments and other things. So the discussion went whether or not it would make any sense for the town to abandon the road. I talked to Jay Habansky and I talked to John Casey as to whether there was any particular use for it. I talked to Kelly Kerrigan, who is the Town Conservation Manager, and she said, actually, right now, that she said they're replacing a lot of costing the town money with removing trees that were coming down in that right of way. So the discussion went whether or not the town would have any use for that road. We actually did with the neighbors a goom call to see if anybody had any objections or concerns, and they did not. So the question for your commission is, is do we have a purpose for the road? Now, I will also say that the second application is there's a parcel behind 5 Wood Avenue, right next to 91 Wood. So if we abandon the road, John Casey said there's a 1.1, or 0.11 acre parcel that would be landlocked. It was currently owned by the town and was probably taken for taxes in around 2,000. And the idea would be if we were to abandon the road, we don't want to create a landlocked parcel. So the concept was to look at that parcel behind 65 Wood Avenue and offer it first to 65 Wood to purchase. If they wished it, we were going to have a purchase price be approximately the assessed value from the town. And then if they didn't want it, we would attach it to 91 Wood Avenue with the idea of selling it, so we didn't have a landlocked lot. So really, the question for your commission is, do you see the purpose of abandoning the road in Van Burskirk? The undeveloped portion of Van Burskirk?
Okay.
John Staley?
John, why don't you go, actually, I saw Christina's hand first, but I heard John right after.
It's okay, John can go. John can go, it's fine.
Go ahead and then I'll do it.
Either way. Mrs. Jackson, I've just had one question on the parcel. And why it would not, it's only offered to one adjoining other than 91 parcel?
Well, so the parcel behind 65 Wood, is that the question?
Yes.
So the, there's two parcels here. One is the road itself, which would be divided by all the adjoining owners. But then
That's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, no, no, so
It goes all the way to King Street, right?
Yeah, no, the road, the road is, yeah, correct. It goes, it goes from the Van Burskirk Avenue that you could see on, on the video here, all the way through to King Street. The portion full of trees is the undeveloped portion. That road is one application, and that would be divided between all of the owners. But as John Casey pointed out me from engineering, there's a parcel behind 65 Wood Avenue, which is a 0.11 acre. So if I abandon the road, I've now landlocked that little piece. So we should abandon, we should take that little piece and decide what we want to do with it. Either convey that just to the adjoining property, which is 65 Wood. Or to the alternative, if the 65 Wood doesn't want it, we could then, we could then attach it to the 91 Wood Avenue, which the town owns, and sell it. I just don't want to have a landlocked piece that we can't do anything with for eternity.
Okay, would that go, would that go from, from 65 all the way to 91?
If 65 doesn't want it, okay? If the adjoining parcel to 91, if you see 91 Wood Avenue on the red dot, just to the right of it is a little house. Right there, right there.
Right.
And right behind that, you can't see through the trees, is a 0.11 acre parcel hidden under the trees. So if I, if we abandon the road and give everybody their portion of it, I then have this parcel stuck in there. So the idea was, I don't want to give it to anyone, because there's no benefit to that. We would offer it to the adjoint, the next adjoining house, which is the one in front of it, which is the one just to the right of that red dot we see. And if they don't want it, that's fine. We own 91, the town owns 91. I would then attach it to that parcel and sell the whole parcel, so we don't have this land sitting there doing nothing.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. I understand now.
Thank you, sir.
Christina's next, and then William.
Actually, John asked the question that I was going to pose, so
Okay, William?
I withdraw my question.
Okay, my initial question is that road stops there. Or if I understand this right, you're trying to continue that road to where? If everything went well, where would that road go all the way to?
If you were to look at the paper road, and I think, Sussmita, did they get the little, the handout I gave them? There was a
Yes.
If you continued the road, it would go from Van Burskirk all the way up to King Street. But if you look at where the paper road runs into King Street, all those properties have encroached on it. You'll see driveways and garages are all sort of stuck in there. So the idea was, yeah, but second half, it's like, yeah, there you go. So you can see the, you can see my little, right there, down toward the right where it matches King Street. You can see we have driveways and somebody's fenced and garden and, you know, so as talking to engineering, they said, no, we're never going to extend that road. So I don't see the purpose of holding the road if we could benefit from getting, sharing it to the neighbors more specifically. I don't see the town should be maintaining the trees if we don't, if we have an option.
So what you're saying is, instead of putting the road there, sell 91 to whoever would like it and abandon extending that road, because the costs are too high?
Abandon the road. We'll sell 91 Wood. And you see the part where she's got where it's square right next to 91? That's that little parcel that if I abandon the road, becomes landlocked. So the idea would be abandon the road, give half to everybody, everybody gets their portion. But then that little portion, portion is the second application, which is, okay, I don't want to landlock it. So I offer it to the house just ahead of it, just, just above it. And if they don't want it, that's fine, then I attach it to 91 Wood and we sell it as a bigger parcel. Again, I just, that's not, other than I don't want to landlock a piece of property forever.
Okay, so you haven't gotten a final number on that parcel yet. You haven't had an assessment on that?
I don't have an assessment on that, although I can tell you that the assessor values the property somewhere between $5,000 and $8,000.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Yes, thank you. I had a couple of questions. There is no sewer running through this, or no storm drains running through any of this area?
No, sir, not according to Mr. Casey.
Okay. And are we only dealing with this 91 and the lot to the right of it? Are those the only two theoretically buildable or vacant properties in this area? Is there anything to the right of that property?
The right of those properties is somebody's, is somebody's property. We took 91 Wood in a foreclosure, I don't know, a year or two ago.
I remember that really well. Is the lot behind 91 Wood, is that already extended?
So 91 Wood, what you see in that photo is the lot line up to Van Burskirk. Again, I'm only abandoning the road partly because, yes, it adds to 91 Wood, but it doesn't seem like the road will ever be built, so my thought was to
91, my question is, the 91 Wood property already extended to Van Burskirk?
It extends to Van Burskirk, yes, sir.
Okay, so it's a done deal. There's no way we could, we could grab back all those parcels along there. The reason I say is, we're working right now and planning on Stratford Housing Partnership. Trying to come up with land that we can do affordable housing on. If you could put together three parcels here, you would have enough land to do even a six-unit, small, small senior housing thing. But you're saying that 91 already belongs to, is already deeded with the property and the house. What we see here is already existing for that. Okay, that was one of my big questions. And the other one was there is a suggestion that there's a right of way, there's a house that faces on the unmapped, the unbuilt version of Van Buskirk, that they would have to reroute their driveway? I assume that's over, that King Street is the one that runs up to bottom on this map?
King Street was, runs, one runs from bottom to top of your screen on the right-hand side.
Right. So there's one house that's set on the side as if, as if Buskirk was going to be built and it never got built. So they have a driveway that runs into unpaved surface, correct?
Yeah, so, yes, sir. So I've actually had conversations with that owner, and that house faces on King Street. She's aware, she's actually very excited about this transition, because she at least knows that she'd have some space to get to her, to get to her garage. She does get, that she's already talked to the neighbor on the other side about coming some kind of a driveway agreement if this transfer goes through.
So you'd split the property between both sides of the street?
I would split them between both sides of the street, and they could, they've already know that they need to work out some sort of a driveway agreement.
Well, I was ready to debate you on all kinds of issues, but my feeling is that you presented a pretty good case. Christina, yes? Christina, I think you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that. I had to unmute myself. Hi, Attorney Jackson. Um, so just so that I'm clear, because there, there was a moment where Harold's question froze up for me. So the part, the, the black square right now that's behind 65, that, that currently is not, like, that's not deeded to 91 now, where you're looking to do that, correct?
Correct. Right now, that is owned by the town of Stratford, is a separate lot.
As is the right of way in the, the false Van Buskirk Avenue.
Say that again?
As is the land that's in that right of way where Van Buskirk, okay. Is there any value, I guess, what's the what's the cost benefit in terms of the value that the parcel in question adds to 91 versus its value as, I don't know, as preserved open space?
So what John Casey was saying was preserve, preserve open space with no access causes the town trouble. So he was saying that we were going to offer it to the neighboring property, the one 65, which is the one just above that square box, to, to have them own it, and I don't have a value for what that was, although we sort of, the RDA sort of bounced around. If we sold it, we might sell it to the assessed value by the, our town assessor. So John's problem with open space was, we then have to maintain it. And if we leave it as open space, we're going to have to get access agreement over somebody's property to get in there and maintain it. And that's what Kelly Kerrigan was worried about is access that's landlocked creates a need for access easements and everything else. So therefore, it might be more of a burden, and it's not a big enough lot to make a big effect on, on open space. It's 0.11 acres. So the idea was, I'd rather give it, I'd rather make a deal with 65, so they have a big, nice, pretty backyard. But if they don't want it, I don't want to force them, and that, but I have a good out, which is add it to 91, and that way we're not locking.
Then, then I guess the part B to my question is, let's take that parcel out of, out of the equation right now and just look at the land that the undeveloped part of Van Buskirk Avenue is on? If your idea, the idea is to the idea is to basically just add it to the abutting parcels? Is that my understanding of that?
If, if you and the county council agree, I would take everybody's lot lines and carry them to the middle of the road, and I would basically grant to everybody that portion. Yes, the tax will get something. What's that?
Would they be taxed on it?
They would be. I've actually had a conversation with both the tax assessor and all the neighbors. The lowest tax was like $50 to $75, and one person might have a $300 increase in their taxes. But we've already had a full conversation with them that that is a possibility.
Okay. And again, what is the area of just Van Buskirk? Like, what's, what, you said the, the other parcel was 0.11 acres. How, how big is this?
And that one, I can't answer. Sorry about that. I don't have that information. I, the idea was whether we want to grant Van Burskirk to all the neighbors. I never added up how big it is.
Okay. Okay. And there's, is there any concern from the Conservation Administrator? Has she commented on? I guess, I guess my, the only thing I'm thinking of is that we have an opportunity here to preserve tree canopy. That entire, that entire strip has trees. And if you start deeding it to the abutting, you know, to the abutting parcels, they can do whatever they want and remove those trees in an area of town that, whose tree canopy is kind of sparse. So from a, from a, from a, I guess, from an open space perspective, or from a, from a environmental perspective, is there a value to maintaining that as public right of way that has access through the developed part of Van Buskirk or through King Street?
So when I asked Kelly Kerrigan that very question, she actually felt that we were spending more, because those trees are older and brittle. And so she, we had just replaced a shed where a tree came down, there was on that land and took out a, took out a shed or something. She said, the problem she had was access. We don't really have access to that space, so it's not really going to be beneficial to we don't have any real good way to get trucks on there or tree crew in there to do any tree maintenance. So she said she didn't see that there was any benefit to holding it, but I did consult her.
Okay, so not even as passive open space that doesn't really need to be, like, more like a preserve than anything else?
But you'd have to get her commentary directly, but what she'd said to me was that, that she didn't see any benefit to holding it. But yes, I did consult her.
Okay, thank you.
And feel there's any benefit.
Okay, thank you.
A final question, which, I have a question. We ran into this in another situation, where we were dealing with landlocked land, and it was a dead-end street that ran into it. And one of the problems that Stratford has is, because we had no zoning or no effective planning or zoning when a lot of these houses were built, we have a lot of dead-end streets or uncompleted streets that will forever be a problem for us. We tried very much to do a new proper dead-end, which is, you know, around it, so that the cars coming in can do a turnaround and not have to back into someone's driveway. We kind of insisted on it on this other piece of property, which is only about three or four blocks away from this piece of property, if I remember correctly. Did anyone discuss what they're going to do at the end of Van Buskirk Street, where we currently have a dead end and we will always have a dead end? Is there any way that this land could be, even, even if we simply hold back a portion of the right of way in order to put a turnaround into that, which is what current planning says, if you have a dead end, you must have a turnaround? Talking to the planning, that really does come within our purview. That's something that we really need to make sure that we at least notify you that to permanently make a dead end is problematic, in my opinion.
I don't think that, when I talked to John Casey, I don't think he noted that. I'm not saying he would have, so I don't think anybody spent, looked at that, but if you'd like us to look at that, I would be happy to make sure that somebody looked at that.
At the very least, if someone could, could grab back a portion of it as a piece of
Mr. Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
Town Planner Sussmita Atota, I think there are backlines here that kind of prevents engineering-wise construction. I'm going to show you on this map. engineering-wise construction. I'm going to show you on this map, I believe to have seen wetlands nearby.
Well, that's funny, because that was my last question, because it looks at, from looking at the canopy area, that we might have some wetlands in that area.
And if there are wetlands, it's hard.
Can I, may I, Sismita, can you go back to where you were? Your map, can you pull it back down?
Yes.
Because that's actually a visual example of what I was talking about.
You mean to say the previous map or this map?
Well, no, where you were on that map before it, you, you were actually showing a dead-end with a turnaround.
This one?
See, this is a dead-end that you're seeing now. But there is one, you had, somewhere in your, in your image area, you had a dead-end with a turnaround.
I thought this was the dead-end with the turnaround here. But if you want to see in here, you can see, but this, this is, I think the turnaround.
But Sismita, you were saying that's a wetland?
No, I thought they're rare, but for some reason, I, I don't see it on the map. Maybe I misunderstood. At this scale, I'm not seeing it, but even otherwise, I don't believe, you know, there were plans to continue the road. And I, I, I know the, we have the town engineers' comments and this, you know, memorandum that was sent to us. There were two.
Sismita, that's the, that's the other one. Go back to the first, the first application.
Yeah, I'm going to open the first one.
If I may say, Chairman Watson, the problem I have with, with, and I'm not, look, I'm just here to tell you. If we, the problem with putting a turnaround is we have a straight road. And if I were to, if you would insist on a turnaround, I'm going to be taking land from the adjoining owners to make a turnaround, which I think is a little more than, than just the abandonment of the road. So I'm not, I think the neighbors are okay with the abandonment if we chose to do it. But if I had to make a turnaround, I think you start taking land, which might change the dynamic.
Exactly. And I concur with Attorney Jackson, because I think the radius required to put a turnaround there would actually involve takings from the neighboring property owners to actually-
In the other, in the other property, we were able to do it by simply using the road width and the three feet on either side of it or the five feet on either side of it. We were, we were able to come up with a solution, because we approved that. We approved that piece, that, that piece of property specifically because of that solution. That they would, we would actually undo something that had been done and everybody would walk away a winner in that, in that situation. I don't want to spend the rest of the evening on this subject, but I just wanted to make my opinion known, at the very least.
Well, I'm trying to bring up the other attachment that Mr. Jackson shared, but I don't believe I downloaded it and it might take a little time. But if you would like for me to, I can do that. What is, do you want me to go back and show that? Or, you know, it was sent to your emails separately?
I printed it out. I, I have it here.
Okay.
Has wetlands looked at this land at all?
Well, Conservation Superintendent Kelly Carrigan did look at it and I don't believe there are any wetlands. I, you know, I, I just wanted to double check and I don't see it on the map here.
Good. She's very good on her words, so.
Just for the record, Mr. Watson, this is a municipal improvement eight dash twenty-four review.
Don't move, don't move. See right here?
Oh, my God.
Up in the upper left-hand corner.
This one?
On, I can't see the street.
Is it Plainview Drive?
Yes.
That you're talking about? Okay.
That's their solution to a dead-end. It's not full width. You have to do a K-turn to get around, but you can do it without driving in someone else's, on someone else's property.
I think you can still do it for this one, even after you abandoned the rest of the street in the back.
Yeah, that, that's. That's what I would hope, that that would be doable in that, in that area.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
In this discussion, is there something actionable that we're trying to do with, with this? Or are we, like, are we trying to ask, are we asking or going, having, sending this back or anything? Or can we move forward on?
Can I, can I, can I respond, Christina?
Yeah.
One of our primary duties is to ensure that roadways are properly routed and rerouted and mapped and unmapped. So this really hits right upon our, one of our outlined duties that we should make sure of. If we went around, we wouldn't have these two dead-end roads that you see at the top of the GIS image up here. That would have never happened.
Okay.
So I don't know. The only thing we need, I guess all we need to do really is to create a motion that, that accepts the, the actions that are being undertaken by, it's actually the town council. They're the ones that already voted and moved on it.
Mr. Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to interrupt. For the record, Commissioner Semt joined this conversation at 7:06 PM. He's with us right now. And regarding next steps, eight dash twenty-four reviews have to be reviewed and given a recommendation either in favor or not in favor in 35 days. If it's not done so, it gets automatically approved. So today, if you do not render a decision, sorry.
Could we, could we approve it with a suggestion? I believe we could do that, correct? So what I would like to do is, here, let me just offer this. I offer my approval of this project with the suggestion that they come up with a, with the most feasible turnaround at the exist, at the end of the existing Van Buschirk Road. How does that sound? Anybody want to comment on that?
And some, some for, I, listen, I think it's acceptable. Was that a motion that you made or?
Well, I wanted to make, I wanted to make sure. I don't want to say that I make, I, I want you guys to give me an opinion. Do you think it's something that you would vote for? Because that would, that's where I, I land.
I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable suggestion.
I, I think it tidies it up well, even though you're deeding the rest of the property to people. Even though they're divvying it up, it would make it easy as a turnaround so you don't go in each other's driveways. I think that'd be a nice button-up and result to that project.
So will someone make a motion?
I make a motion to approve it with a sort of a, sort of a cul-de-sac turnaround. And keep the property to 91, possibly sell it to 65. If they don't, then they keep it at 91 and deed the rest of the road with that little turnaround. I, I have seconded that.
No, you, you, you presented it.
You make that motion.
I presented it, sorry. Sorry.
Harold, I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? John, are you there? Is John there? John Staley?
He's muted.
We can't hear you. You're muted.
I'll, I'll unmute him.
Okay, there we go. John?
Okay, I, I tried to speak with Mr. Jackson three times to be recognized. I haven't been. So I was muted. And, and so I could not say anything. So now you're calling for a vote.
Okay, then let's pause.
Abstain. I abstain.
John, hold on a sec. Let's pause the vote and let, let's let John make the comments that he wants. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Okay, John, go ahead.
No comment.
Oh?
No, I'll just keep a record of it.
No, I believe the administrator muted all of us. And we all had to unmute, but I don't think you can unmute if you're on the phone. Is that poss, is that correct, administrator?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think it's an oversight. Yes.
I muted everyone because there was a caller who had TV on, whose conversation was, you know, interrupting this conversation. And I apologize for the inconvenience caused to Mr. Staley. And I, you know, that's the problem with these go-to meetings, I suppose.
Well, we learned a new thing tonight. We learned that if, if, if you have, if you're on phone, the controls are limited. So that's something we'll just have to pay attention to. Look, I don't think anybody did anything. I hope no one did anything purposefully. It was the technology-
There was no intention. Just missed my opportunity to speak.
No.
Well, that's why I paused. We're letting you speak now. Go ahead.
Well, it, it, you've gone way past what I wanted to talk about with the people obtaining the property and how many and so forth.
John, I'd really like to hear your question. I mean, if there's something that we should be considering that we're, that you think we're not, I'd, I'd like to hear that.
Well, Mr. Jackson said that the, down in the middle of the street where the encroachment was on this paper trail, it's going to be absorbed to the residents. There's really only one possible that's not, you know, online with it. And are we looking at a problem?
If I may, sir, what?
And then it went, and then it went on to the dead-end.
Mr. Staley, this is Bruce Jackson, Assistant Town Attorney. I've had meetings, virtual meetings with all the neighbors. I've had, I sent letters to all the neighbors. We got responses. I had no negative responses from anyone, even though we did not just correspondence. But we, we offered a, a, a virtual meeting in which the RDA and Mr. Casey were all present. So I did not hear of any negative responses from anybody in that, in that group.
Okay, so my question is, then we moved on to a dead-end and a turnaround from letting the residents take the property over. I'm not sure what we're voting on.
We are, we are, the vote was to vote on accepting what is being presented to us, that the town would re, would take and split up the existing unbilled portion of Van Buschirk Road between the individual people that live on that, in that, on the, bordered on those properties. Basically, there's only one parcel that would be landlocked and if that could not be bought, sold to one of the other people, then it would be combined into the wood property.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watson.
I, I had anything that I find remaining is the problem that we are allowing a dead-end road in 2021 to become another addition, become formalized in Stratford, when we have so many dead-end roads already.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So the motion on the table is to make a favorable recommendation on, on the proposed plan.
Yes.
With an added suggestion that there be a, I'm sorry, what is the formal name of that? The turnabout? Is that what it's called?
A turnabout, yes.
A turnabout. A turn, that a turnabout be constructed on the developed part of Van Buschirk to avoid creating a dead-end road?
Well, no, what I was going to suggest is that we do it on the undeveloped portion of it. It's about 30 feet that they would have to save.
Right, but it's, but it's at the end of the development.
At the end of the existing road.
Okay.
We have one less dead-end road in Stratford.
Okay. All right. So the, that motion is on the table already. We had a, we had, I think everybody but John had voted, so maybe John should register his vote.
John Staley, I abstain.
Okay, so had we, we had not, we had voted one, two, three, four, five. Debbie, had you voted?
No, she's.
Oh, she's not able to vote tonight. Sorry, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I, I can't vote anymore because you have, right?
Yes, because Daniel made it, yes.
Okay. That's okay. I understand.
So it sounds like it's four yeas, zero nays, and one abstention.
I think that we can, can we accept that? Any objections to that?
Crazy.
All right. Bruce, are you still on?
I'm here.
Everything's, does that sound okay with you?
Yeah, so just to, to comment on your note, the, the, the property divisions are done by John Casey from the town. So I'll just tell him you're concerned when he's does the write, the write-ups for the legal descriptions for the individual properties. I'll ask him to do his best to add the turnaround you want. Because he's the one who actually divides up how the property is separated.
And he will know exactly what I'm speaking about, because he's the one that suggested it on this other problem.
But I'm pretty sure he'll know exactly what you want.
Yes. All right, so I guess we are okay then if we, if we, we're ready to move on to the next property, which is?
Thanks, Bruce.
Which is la, 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 la. It's a CGS eight twenty-four review of the abandonment of unpaved streets known as Orno Place, Leslie Street, and Charlotte Street. This has been voted on by the town. They approved it. I believe unanimously, yes, they approved it unanimously. It also came before planning in September 2019. That's before some of you, I think, were on this, on this, on this current land use board. But-
We're not.
No, we were not.
The person who's speaking tonight on that is the developer's lawyer, I believe, Robert Rosati. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we should be able to see.
Good evening.
I also, also present is Steve Warner, the property manager for Parkway Plaza Stratford LLC, which is Robert Martin Spriglio. They are the principal owners and developers of this property.
Okay.
You, you want me to try and walk you through it or?
I, I think we should give you the floor and let you present what you have to us.
Okay, thank you. You have the, the, the tax parcel map of the Stratford lands that I just sent you. Can you, can you put up maybe the site plan?
Okay, you, you want me to not put this up? I thought you just handed-
We'll save that. We'll save that, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, the one, yeah. Onto that one, yes. Thank you.
I have to rotate it.
Okay, thanks. So, so the last time we were here, we, we weren't doing this in phases. I, I want to make it clear to everybody that now we've made application for this property for just a first phase, a portion of the property along Main Street to develop a full-service coffee shop. And I want to make it clear, at this stage, there's going to be no development along the Husatonic River. That's all reserved for future development. So what you're looking at now, please focus on- So what you're looking at now, please focus on, um, the, the, um, the in-color portion of it, the highlighted portion of it, and the, um, the building, uh, to the lower left, uh, along, along Main, Main Street. That's the, um, coffee shop that we're, um, going to um, our zoning commission, uh, for site plan and special case approval uh, in the CNC district, uh, and that's a permitted use in the CNC district. Orno Place, Leslie Street, and Charlotte Street are, uh, narrow um, dirt roads that serve no purpose to the town. Um, they're not used by anybody other than the Spriglios or the three houses that they own. Um, there's, there's one house on Orno, one on Leslie, and one on Charlotte. Uh, those houses, of course, are going to be demolished with this development. Um, it, so there is, um, there's just no reason for, for the, the town to, uh, to have these. Um, the, the Spriglios, uh, own both sides of these streets. Uh, so, so, um, after the abandonment, that they'd fall into the, uh, development, into the, um, uh, consolidated, uh, plan. Um, and if you look at the upper left-hand corner where there's a dark, uh, finger of, of the property of the development, yeah, that, that right there is, that's town property. The rest of that property goes to the end of Riders, the Riders Lane cul-de-sac, and it also borders other property owned by Spriglio. So the reason I'm saying that now, it's, it's important that we're not landlocking a town-owned property. There's access to that property from, uh, the cul-de-sac of Riders, and there's access to that property through, um, uh, AD8 Riders, which is Riders Landing, and other property owned by the Spriglios. Um, but, but we are, um, representing here and representing, uh, will be representing before the zoning commission. We will be giving, uh, an easement through our development, uh, to that finger, uh, of property that the town owns anyways, even though there's other access points to that property. And the access that we're able to give, um, through the property um, is, is really where the old Charlotte would be and the old Orno Place would be. There's another, um, map, uh, is Sismita can?
Yes.
Pull that up. That shows that shaded access area.
This one?
Not, not that one, Sismita. That's the consolidated plan. Yes, okay. So guys, do you see, um, the shaded area where Charlotte is, is now? Yep. And then it, it leads to Orno. It takes a left, and then it takes a right to the town-owned property. We would love to give you a straight shot, but we can't because that's, um, that, that's, uh, a one-way street out of the property. Uh, and, and I think all our engineering and DOT, um, the DOT study and the traffic study, they mandated that, that's, that's going to be a one-way entrance out. Um, so, uh, our, our first step, guys, is to, um.
Interrupt you one second. Can you repeat that statement?
About the, about, um, Leslie being a one-way out? Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what the traffic plan, the DOT study, and our engineers, uh, said, uh, Leslie had to be designed, that the, old Leslie, which is going to be our, um, one of our new, um, driveways. Um, that, that is, um, that, that has to be an, um, an exit out, a one-way exit out.
So the other?
Mr. Rosati?
Is it Charlotte?
Yes.
The exit in is at Charlotte, the exit out is at Leslie?
Yes. Let, the old Leslie, uh, the, the, the existing Leslie now will be one-way, a, a one-way driveway out.
Okay.
Okay?
And Charlotte would be the one-way in?
Co, co.
Out.
I believe, and, and Steve Warner could, um, could jump in. That's good, that's going to be a two-way, um, uh, entrance and exit.
Hi, uh, if I may interrupt, this is Steve Warner, uh, property manager for Riders. And, uh, Bob is, uh, describing Leslie, uh, correctly. It is a, it is a one-way. It's actually a, a, a two-lane one-way um, leading to Main Street, uh, but it also serves as, as one, one lane serves as a, uh, drive-through for the coffee shop. Um, and then the other lane, lane allows, uh, access, uh, egress out of, uh, Leslie onto Main Street. Um, so that's, that's what Leslie will become.
Mr. Chair, I got a question. It's Dan Simpson. So,
Okay.
Bob, I got a question on the, can you just show us where the alignment is with Main Street, where the traffic signals are now, as, and also where the exit, uh, for the Merritt Parkway lies in conjunction with, um, with those new roads? Or, or do they not align? That's what I'm trying, I'm, I'm having a tough time seeing it off of this map that we're looking at.
So if you go to, back to the site plan.
One second.
Where, where we're abandoning Charlotte, th- that's, um, that's going to be, um, across from the Merritt Parkway.
Um, From that exit, correct?
Yes, and there will be a light there.
Okay, there's also a light that's, that's, uh, just before there, which is the intersection of Main Street Putney. There's another light that's right there.
Correct.
Yeah. And I think my only concern is, you know, that's a heavily traffic, you know, produced area through there, especially in the morning hours. So, um, I just want to make sure there's been consideration as far as the overall, the overall traffic. And then is that a one-way? Is that, we said, a one-way going into Charlotte?
No, that's going to be two-way.
That'll be two-way? Okay.
This, this was all, um, per the DOT study in, of this area and, uh, the traffic study and our lengthy, uh, engineering of, of the development. It, thi- this is all going to be, uh, presented, embedded, uh, to the zoning commission with the special case and site plan approval. And again, it's only for this first phase right now. Um, we've, we've designed these, um, these entrances and exits per DOT and per our traffic study and engineers uh, to, to safely design it. Uh, we got to meet, uh, that special case criteria of, um, of safety, uh, with the entrances and exits and, and parking, um, et cetera.
So, uh, hello, am I muted? Hello?
No, you're not. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Mr. Rosati?
Yes, Mr. Staley. How are you?
I'm very well, you too, I hope. Uh, just a clarification. So, um, the per DOT, uh, this phase one for Parkway Plaza, we're going, there's a two-way in and out, uh, where Charlotte was or would be.
Yes.
And then, so entry to the, um, Stratford area with an access, you would go down Charlotte, take a left on Orno Place, and take a right, uh, from where Leslie would have been.
Yes.
And coming out, we can come out Leslie or take a left and for the coffee house and come the other way.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the traffic flow. That, that's correct.
Now. Okay, so the riverwalk, is that, is that a future? That's not in the, uh, phase one?
No, has, that's all for future development. There, there, that's going to have to be addressed, uh, with our, um, future phases, uh, when we go to develop tho, the properties along the river. Uh, it, it, um, this first phase, uh, it, um, does not involve that, um, at, at this time. Uh, we'll have to go back in for another special case and site plan approval when we're ready to develop uh, those, um, phases, and we'll have to address the riverwalk and all those, uh, issues of public access. Um, it, and I do want to point out that that, that finger of town-owned property, it's completely overgrown, um, and it's, the town is, owns that from a deed back in the, uh, 1800s. And until we did this project, I'm not sure the town knew they ever owned that. I'm not sure anybody from the town has ever stepped foot on that property. Um, it's overground grown, and then it, then it, um, leads to a huge drop in elevation down into, um, um, uh,
To the Husatonic.
Br- br- brushed wooded area, um, and, and then eventually leads to the cul-de-sac, um, uh, on Riders, because Riders hooks around, uh, and, and leads to, uh, um, the, the, the river back there.
Right. Thank you very much.
I just, I, I get my point is, um, I know there's a huge concern, um, for the riverwalk and for, uh, public access to the river, and, and what are we going to do about developing along the river? And, and we, we, we get all that, and we will address all that, but not now, because we're only dealing with this first phase. Uh, we're not impacting that, that at this point. Um, but we, we, we have a plan of development that will address all that down, down the road. We're just looking to get these three roads abandoned because they don't serve anybody other than the Spriglios, and this is a great opportunity to develop this property that's sitting there, uh, and, and, um, it gets, it gets these, um, these, uh, narrow, uh, dirt roads, uh, off the books of the town, uh, and, and it's no longer a liability for the town, uh, and, and ownership would all fall to the Spriglios in this project because they own all sides of these roads.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
William?
Yes. I guess a question to us, Mr. Rosati, is you're looking for the planning commission to possibly deed that land to you as access or just deed it to the Spriglios altogether and sell you the property? That's the question?
Oh, I think if, I think if, um, if you, if you recommend the abandonment and the, uh, um, the drill would be that, um, both, both sides go to the owners, uh, uh, on both sides, and, and we're the owner on both sides. So.
Can they, can they show that parcel again? That little finger that you're talking about? Can they show that on the map again?
Oh, yeah.
That finger that you're talking about? The town-owned property part.
Oh, that, that's.
I guess my question is, you? Sorry?
When we go to the, that's a good question, sir. When we go to the next phase, then, uh, I, I, I suppose that would be a discussion with the town and with the town attorney about whether, um, they want to deed that to us or, uh, uh, we would do, uh, mutual cross-easements.
Okay, so, so for tonight's question, what is the question? Because I thought that was the question.
No, that, that finger, the shaded finger of property is not the question. The question is to abandon the three roads.
Do we have Orno Place and Leslie?
Yes, sir.
Who opposed on the exist, on the new, uh, on this new phase?
Yes, on the first, so we can, so we can develop the first phase, correct?
But do we have a, can, can, can we see a drawing that shows the existing three roads on this phase one?
Yes, if you go to the, the la, the last one that was, uh, pulled up that shows the, uh, the shaded, um, access, we were going to give the town. There's also a consolidation map, um, uh, the street abandonment plan, actually, uh, we should put that up, Sismita.
And William, we're only dealing with this phase one parcel right now.
Which is Charlotte Street, Orno Place, and Leslie?
It's only the area within that dotted line that it's showing to us.
Yes, sir.
I see. So the question for us is exactly what?
Well, it's, are we going to say, yes, you can?
Do we abandon, do we?
You can abandon these streets. But the question that I would like, just the information I'd like to give planning is that remember that you're not just abandoning the street, you're abandoning the right-of-ways that are there also. So that's the question is, do we want to abandon the streets? And do we want to abandon the right-of-ways? Are we assured that all of the utilities that run through there will be removed? And/or if they stay, will we have right, new right-of-ways that will accommodate Stratford's entry in and out of those properties? The other thing there was in, earlier in September, there, when we did this in 2019, uh, I guess that's two years ago now, there was a question of the parcel that, that the, that they've agreed is Stratford's, the, the area you saw that was in the darker color. There was a, there needs to be a right-of-way that connects to the main road so that we have access to it. So currently, our dispute last time with, argument with the developer was that we needed to have a way to access that point in a way that would allow for multiple uses. Um, we had a lot of conversation about the fact that this is on one of our major planned greenways and that we had hoped eventually to bring our green, greenway up to that area and around behind these, the shopping center that's just, uh, north of there. So they connect into the Sikorsky Greenway, uh, which I don't see it here. So any of the conversations that we had two years ago, I don't see that they've been accommodated in this drawing of the area that is on, uh, Leslie Street. We had talked about the, currently, right now, we have a right-of-way that goes up Leslie Street that connects into that property. Well, we're being told the DOT, the, the DOT wants that to be an exit lane, and they, the developer is saying that they want the other lane there to be a, uh, lineup for the coffee lane.
Attorney, Attorney Watson, uh, this is Steve Warner, again, the property manager.
Yes.
We, we did accommodate, um, the town's request, uh, for that, and we, we took careful, um, planning to do that. So the town service town, town services, um, can access Charlotte Street and, and, and come around, uh, come around the, the development, uh, to the, uh, town-owned property. All right, so that is one, and that is one way to come, uh, into the property through, whether emergency vehicles or otherwise. Uh, the other way is, uh, there is a connector, uh, between the Riders Landing Shopping Center and, uh, the, uh, Orno Place, where Orno Place is being abandoned. That, that will connect to, uh, this new development. So that is another access point for, for the town.
Uh, to.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
There is a connect, there is a connector. If, so Sismita, if you could bring up the, the concept plan again, that's been submitted. Okay. So if you, if you draw your attention to the darkened town-owned property in the upper left-hand corner, if you come down, follow that arrow down, you'll see a cut-through into Riders Landing to your left. If you went to the left right now, where that arrow is, that is the cut-through to Riders Landing Shopping Center. So these properties will be, will be joined together, and have a multiple access points, ways of getting in and out of the property. And it was important for us to do this for emergency services as well.
Mr. Chairman, Dan Seft again. So I do remember our conversation back a couple of years ago, but I believe there was going to be a walkway that was provided. In fact, I thought we had seen, conceptually, an area that was, that was marked specifically for pedestrian traffic to go through, not by vehicles, but by, by walking, a walkway. So I don't see that here, and that, that's my concern. If this is just going to be asphalt and no particular walkway for a pedestrian to get through to the River Walk, that's not what was proposed two years ago.
Well, and that goes further to what I was saying, in the sense that we had really tried to press that our need for a project like this to represent the multimodal future, with people on bikes, with people on walking, with people in cars, a combination of all of the three. And that's what I worry, that I'm seeing traditional car parking, but I'm not seeing, and car
Board, board members That doesn't mean it's not easy. If, if, board members, if I may, also, just to say one more thing, please. The conceptual plan that you're looking at does not show a 3D plan, which is, has been submitted for approval of this development. And in that plan, there is, there is pedestrian access along Main Street, which, you know, you see a lighter color there. Those are sidewalks, all right? And those sidewalks, those sidewalks along Main Street, yes. So they, those come in, they come across the light, they, they go down the, exactly. All right? These are, these are pedestrian access points into the development. And if you notice, okay, if you notice that they run along the, the property to the, to the first phase, they run along the first phase line there. And if we can bring that plan back out, you'll see that there's a, a finger of this plan in the upper right-hand corner, which shows a park and bikes. And this is, you know, this is our ultimate goal here, is, is for pedestrian walkway along, along the, the property where accessible. It's a very steep drop-off if everybody were to come out and take a look at this. It's a 40 to 50-foot cliff on some parts here. So we, all right, so our conceptual plan does show access, pedestrian access to, you know, starting with this first phase, and once we continue to develop, that, that would grow into the site plan.
Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir. I don't know who's talking, but go ahead.
I'm sorry, it's Robert, it's Robert Rosati. All due respect, we, we, we designed this with, with your comments from the last time in mind, and also for, like I said, the DOT and our engineers. And, and again, this, when I, when I stated that it shows the, the access, I, I meant it was access for vehicles and pedestrians. And Steve just showed you that and explained that to you.
No one has said bikeway or greenway.
It, there's, it does show bikes.
How wide are these side
Again, that's why, this is just the first phase. The things that you are asking for now are reserved for the other phases, and also, those are all for our site plan and special case presentations in the future. We're here now for the specific issue of abandoning these roads, getting your blessing that these roads be abandoned by town council, so we can develop this. So we can add a beautiful project, gateway project to the town of Stratford, instead of the town of Stratford not developing beautiful sites like this. So we can't have the, the abandonment of the road issue stand in our way any longer. You're asking for things that are not before you tonight. Those are reserved for other phases of our site plan and special case approvals down the road before the zoning commission, not the planning commission. You're asking for greenways, you're asking for public access. I, I said it loud and clear tonight, there are five different access points to the Stratford property that Stratford doesn't even know they own. It's overgrown. Nobody is ever going to use that property and get access to that property that way. The greenway, it's tied into this property to be in another phase, and, and the Spriglio's own other property that will, that, that acts, that, that greenway can be accessed and developed. It has nothing to do with this phase. But we can't have obstacles to these roads being abandoned. We can't let Stratford miss this opportunity to have this property developed, especially in this economy, especially in the world of COVID, especially what's going on. Guys, we need your help tonight. We are doing everything we asked for, that you asked for the last time, and everything you're asking for now. Special case approval by the zoning commission, they're going to have the hammer over us with all these issues, okay? And, and some of these issues are not for this phase, they're for the phases down the road, when we have to develop the, along the river, and integrate the greenway. We just need your blessing to get rid of these roads from the town, because they're meaningless to the town. They're a liability for the town. They're only used by the Spriglios.
Mr. Chair?
They have to pay the taxes on them, but we need this.
Chairman? Mr. Rosati?
John Staley.
Yeah, Dan Seft again. Listen, I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Rosati here. So I live a couple, a couple blocks away. That whole area is definitely an eyesore. Anything they can do to develop that property, I think would be a godsend for the neighborhood. But more importantly, I think, Mr. Rosati, the only thing that we were concerned about was if we did abandon these properties, which I think is the right move, do we lose our ability to make any future decision in regards to the green, to the greenway? So I think that was, that was the only thing that we were
And that's a good question, but the answer, you're not losing that liability, because that town property is accessed at the end of Riders, it can be accessed through other property owned by the Spriglios. And again, we, we will address that, and you, and the zoning commission will have their say when we go to develop the other phases. So we're, we're not land-locking or cutting off the town's ability to develop that greenway as part of the other phases. That's a real good point, sir, but the answer is, you're not limiting that ability.
Yes, William.
Okay, so, just now that I see this map up close, it looks like Leslie is a two-way in and out, if I'm correct. There is no Orno Place, and then Charlotte, well, no, I'm sorry, Charlotte will be a one-way out, Leslie will be a two-way in and out, and then that access little piece will come in from Riders Lane. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
He said, he said yes.
I believe Charlotte, I'm sorry to interrupt, I believe Charlotte is a way, and a one-way
Oh, we're losing you. We couldn't hear you.
I think we are losing you, Steve.
I'm sorry. I believe Charlotte is a one-way, way, uh, point.
I, I think we lost him, Harold. So I guess what I'm saying here, and I can see the map expanded here, it's zoomed in, it looks like, what, now that I understand it, Orno Place will not exist. So there'll be a turnoff of Main Street on, to Leslie, and you can come in and out, it's two-way, and a turn-in, there will be no turn-in for Charlotte, that 'll be a one-way out, or vice versa. Is that correct?
All right, Steve, can you respond?
All right, can everybody hear me?
You're fading in and out.
We can hear you, it was just in and out.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm in a bad spot here. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Charlotte, Charlotte at the, at the light at Main Street is, I believe, a one-way in, two-way out.
Okay.
Leslie Street is a, a one-way out with a turning lane to go back into the property if needed.
Okay. So if it's a, Leslie's a one-way out, how are they getting to Leslie? Is that through the parking lots and different things? Is that how they're
Yes, correct.
Yeah, they're taking all the way.
I understand. Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
We are giving up the right-of-ways only on this Phase One property, correct?
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Watson, I'd like to make a favorable motion.
I want you guys to understand, I want to see this project go as quickly as possible. But right now, this, this right-of-way that runs up to our, to the area where you have said yes, you're agreeing that that is Stratford land, the air, that, that area, Charlotte, I believe it's, what is it, Leslie Road, correct?
Well, Leslie stops, and that's a vacant, overgrown piece of property that the town owns by accident for 200 years.
That's like the most Stratford thing ever.
Mr. Chair, I would like to think, I would like to have the floor.
Yes, John, go ahead.
Yes, I, I think we beat this up pretty good, and we're, now we're starting to repeat it. I'd like to make a motion.
Not yet. I just want everybody on the
Well, Harold, we can
If we say yes to this, we are giving up our ability to have a say in, because we will no longer, we will no longer have possessed the right-of-ways on this street. If you're comfortable with that, then say yes, and let's move on. Anybody want to make a motion?
We can make a motion.
Yes, I just asked, I just said I did.
Please make a motion.
I'll second.
Who has the floor?
I hear a motion.
I have a motion, Mr.
So John, the motion you're making, the motion you're making, John, is to abandon those, those three streets, correct?
Uh, yes.
Anybody second?
The motion would, oh, it's a, it's a, oh, yeah, but there's also more to it, Mr. Watson. And in the motion, there, we are, we're going to abandon the three roads, Orno Place, Leslie Street, Charlotte Street, and in exchange, the owners will provide the town with access easement to the town property.
Good, John, thank
End the motion.
That's correct.
That's good, thank you.
I'll second.
That's a fantastic motion, I'd like to second it.
Good, John.
Sorry, Dan, I don't think
Second? Who seconded?
I did.
Dan? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Project, we're not going to let you down.
Wait, we're not done voting.
Please don't. What was that?
Okay, so we're done with that, correct? Let's move on.
Did we record all the votes? I don't know if we heard everyone. You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Watson? Just to be clear, there were people talking over each other, so I couldn't, you know, I don't know if Eileen made a note of who voted, like what, I just wanted Eileen to summarize.
It was unanimous.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, the next thing we have is just the Stratford Partnership online update. Sismita?
Yes. Yeah. Would you like me to give an update?
Yeah, just not too long, not, not too long of one.
Yes. So, right now, our consultant is, you know, in the process of accepting responses from a variety of groups and individuals on the housing survey. So we have four different survey templates with the same questions, asked for four different samples. So one is to Stratford boards and commissions, one is to the residents at large, one is to organizations that serve, you know, the town of Stratford, like the nonprofits. And, and the other one, the last one is for the needs-based residents, like residents who are in housing authority buildings, or senior center, elderly care services, those people. So the reason why we did not roll out the same survey for everyone, is because it will be hard to measure the accuracy of the sample, and it just, you know, people have different needs, and their, you know, the residents at large survey is also open to the employees of the town, the non-residents. So, but after compiling responses in all these four different surveys, the consultant will come up with a way to analyze and summarize the accuracy of the sample and the responses that were received on the questionnaire. And I hope you all took the survey either as a resident, or a board, or commission member. You can't take both, you can just take one of those.
So what you're saying, the survey was different for certain areas of town?
The questions are the same, but the survey medium was different. Like, instead of getting the same link
I know it's going to be this long there.
We duplicated it and put it in four different formats.
Boy, I had to get that motion in.
John, John, can you, can you mute yourself?
Excuse me?
Sorry, can you mute yourself?
Um, yes.
You were, you were, you were live.
How's that?
Thank you.
Uh, Sismita, can you just give the improvement, how many people we've reached so far? Because that's, that's a pretty good statistic.
Yes, so far, I think nearly 700 residents responded. And among the boards and commission members, I think about 70 people. I'm going to send a reminder tomorrow again, because it's the last two weeks. And then, housing organizations, I, we got about 99 to 100 responses. The needs-based residents, we only had, like, you know, I think they got confused. Instead of taking that one particular survey, they took the other one. So I, I, I just have to confirm that with the consultant when he releases the report, but I think one of those has only six or seven responses.
Sismita, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, proceed, go.
What, what was, on the residence side, what was, what was your goal for the number of respondents, and, and so that we can get an idea of how close you are to it?
Good question.
To be honest, we didn't have any goal when we started, but typically, I think a one-person sample of population is considered a good enough response rate. And with 55,000 people approximately, a one-person sample is for 550 residents, so I think we reached that benchmark.
Nice.
And Stratford Cryer has covered it, Stratford Patch has covered it, Connecticut Post has covered it. So I'm assuming there'll be more residents that will take, although they reported the deadline as wrong, and I have to get it corrected by, you know, Chief of Stat.
And it's, it's going out this, this week, sometime this week, to all the churches on the South End. So there should be other people responding also.
Is, is there, I'm sorry, there was a part two to my question, I apologize. Is, do you have a It, it, do you have a sense right now, because I believe, I believe the question, there was a question about where you lived. Can you talk a little bit about the distribution of the respondents by by area of town?
This was actually to to follow up with people who criticized where respondents come from Stratford surveys. We wanted to make sure that we had people that represented all of the town. It's the only thing we were looking for. We we just wanted to be able to say yes, we fairly got people a good number from the North End, from the Center and from the South. That's really.
Do we have an idea right now, where, do we have an idea right at this point in time?
We don't have that. That's our consultant who has to break all of that down.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I I don't think we have that yet.
No, he asked us not to ask him the question until we get closer to the total results because it's a lot of work for him to start breaking all of that down. So we will have that information at some point, Christine.
Just so you know, we are also consultant and Glenn and I were just discussing this afternoon. We were thinking maybe March 11th could be our next meeting for a joint planning and zoning commission meeting update like last time. I'll keep you posted. We have to just discuss as a group in February at one of our partnership meetings. But sometime in March, you will be having another opportunity to weigh in on the recommendations of the plan.
Meanwhile, guys, if if you have any time to do any research, if I find something, I'll send it to you. But I, if you could start looking into how this kind of information search is affecting local planning departments across the state, there are, there are, there is, there is some information out there and nationally, there's information out there. How do we end up with a more equitable way of of supporting people with housing across, you know, across our our actual zoning ordinances? So that's where ultimately the, we're going to have to do the work on our part. I think you're okay with this. Yes, are you, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
The next thing I'd like to do is, Christine, could you tell everybody about, I sent an email to everybody, could you tell them about the? I'm echoing, I'm sorry, I might be speaking too loud. Christine, could you tell everybody about the?
Oh, the the three day, the three D and the three day. I'm sorry, I can't hear you because you're echoing.
I'm just, this feedback.
I can't. Okay. I'm sorry, Harold, could you ask me again?
Could you tell them about the resiliency mapping program that we're going to, that everybody can attend if they want to?
Yeah, actually, did I sign up for that? I apologize, I don't.
I said you're going to be my partner on that.
Oh, oops.
Yes.
Well, I know that Samantha did.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, yeah, I'm so sorry. So the loan from the Connecticut Bar Association.
No, that's zoning.
I'm sorry, there was.
I can provide an update, Mr. Watson.
Can you, can you, Samantha, just give a short?
Yes.
Explanation of it in case anybody's interested.
Yeah, Connecticut Institute of Resilience and Housing Association, also called ASRCA, they hired consultants to do a resilient Connecticut study for southern southeastern Connecticut for Fayetteville County. This includes Stratford and neighboring towns. And ASRCA is right now working on a mapping initiative as part of the study. And this is a workshop announcement that they made. I think it's going to be on February 1st. An email was sent to all the Land Use Boards, Commissions members by MetroCOC staff for assisting them. I suppose some of you registered, like Harold did and I did, and Christina responded back saying that she did as well. And if you haven't received an invitation from MetroCOC staff, please let me know. This was, you know, surprise for me too, that staff was not directly contacted and they just sent out a mass email to everyone. But I'd be happy if the flyer came through to my email in case you are interested in registering and you haven't had prior information on this. And I also.
I've registered, Samantha.
Sorry?
Sorry.
I've registered.
Oh, good, John, because you're the person I was thinking of.
I just put the, I just put the link to the registration page in the chat, so if anybody wants to.
My feeling is their programs are always so educational because they absolutely allow you to look at Stratford in terms of the information they're presenting. So they really do like bring it home. If you have the time to do it, Dan, I know you're still running around like crazy all over the world, but if you do have the time to do it, it's it's really a a good thing. There's one other, I'm not going to spend any more time. If you have, the link is up in the chat, but if it's not there, contact Samantha because she can send it or email me and I'll send you the the JPG that I had. I want to just go back to one of those minutes that on the the planning committee, I mean, the planning committees, Greenway Committee just got notified that there's an additional MetroCOC grant that they needed to apply for. And in doing it, we had very few members who got on to the, who got on to the Zoom to be able to do it. So I spoke with the chair of that committee and she said, yes, she will entertain any new members who would be interested in being on the Greenway Committee. The only requirement is is that you are a biker or a good walker and that you use green, that you use Stratford's current greenways. So if you know of anybody in your travels around Stratford who is a pretty avid biker or walker who you think might be interested, I'm not looking for politics or anything else, I'm looking for someone who would be interested, who can actually contribute their knowledge as a user to the committee, because we're down to me as a user. And that's not really very good. So I want to see other users on it. Everybody else is kind of aged out and biking, so we need some new people on that committee. Email them to me or give them my email and have them contact me directly. I currently have about four people that I'm going to propose to the committee for the next meeting. So I'll put that out there, that's it. Otherwise, we're down to members' comments or concerns. Anybody have any comments?
There's one more, I wanted to inform you all. On March 6th, there is a Land Use Bar, Connecticut Bar Association's Land Use Training Program for Municipal Commissioners. I heard it is a very good program and it's only $40 per person to register. This time, because they're going to do it remote, I am planning on registering myself too, just to be current on what's going on in Connecticut and if there are any changes in procedures because of COVID, the remote meetings and everything, how they're conducted. In case you're interested, please register yourself as well. I can assure you that we would have money to actually reimburse, but I can talk to Jay and see if there's a way, you know, we can get the commissioners to enroll.
Oh, ask the mayor, she could do it. Yes, Christine.
So in in that same vein, the reason I got confused about what you were talking about is because I thought you were referring to the Smart Growth America Equity Summit, which is happening next week. It's actually, I think, a three or four hours a day on the 26th, 27th and 28th. And it's, it's one of those things where you can sort of come and go as you like based on the topics that are being covered that day. It's all virtual, obviously. But it's, you know, it's supposed to be a really good line of of information around improving racial equity, economic inclusion and restore justice through smart growth. So I I posted the link in the chat and I'm I'm registered. I don't know if I can go to all three days, but I'm going to try to stop in for an hour or two each day.
Wow. All right, anybody else? Nothing, John, you're on, you're here by audio. Anything?
No, I'm I'm fine with, it was a good meeting. Thank you very much for sharing a good meeting.
Well, I know we ran two hours and 15 minutes, but it's okay, we we got done our work tonight. Anything else, anybody? Debbie, anything?
Well, I'm good.
Daniel, anything?
I just missed the first part of the meeting, I apologize, I was on my 14th Zoom call today, but.
Okay, well, you made it.
William? No, I'm good, thank you, guys.
Oh, my God, I'm just waiting for a motion to adjourn, Christina. Motion to adjourn.
Let's congratulate Christina for her new position, her her return position.
Okay, thanks.
I guess, thank you, we'll see. Any case, I think that we should give a motion to close.
Harold, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Anybody second that? Oh, then we are closed, we'll see you next month.
All right.
Okay, see ya.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Bye, thank you.